Good morning. Welcome to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. I'm Danielle McCray. I'm Chair of the Committee and also the Councilwoman representing the 2nd District. At this time, I'm asking everyone to please silence your cellphones. Joining us today, we have Committee Member, Councilman Pierce Gray from the 8th District, as well as Councilmember Odette Ramos from the 14th District. In addition, we have several representatives from the Mayor's Office, the City Council President's Office, as well as the Office of Council Services and staff in our committee today is Peroma Nandi. Today, the Committee is going to hear two legislative oversights, LO-25-001 Quarterly Budget Briefings, as well as LO-25-0002 American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Quarterly Budget Briefings. We're going to begin with LO-25-001. For the purpose of calling on representatives from the Finance Departments Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Department of Planning, and the Baltimore City Public Schools to provide a briefing to the City Council on the financial performance and level of spending against the approved budgets. This legislative oversight was introduced on January 13, 2025, and we're going to start with a presentation from Director Larson from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research at this time.
Good morning, Chairwoman McCray, members of the Committee, Laura Larson, City Budget Director, here today to present to the Committee our analysis regarding the first quarter projections for fiscal '26, the fiscal year that began on July 1st. So we'll go to the next slide. At a high level, we are projecting a $3.3 million deficit in the city's general fund. That's driven by a projected $9.1 million surplus in revenue, or about 0.35% variance, and a $12.4 million projected expenditure deficit, approximately a 0.68% negative variance. What I will do is I will walk through our revenue projection, summarizing major surpluses and deficits, and then we'll do the same thing for agency budgets where we will review expenditures. So if we go to the next slide, we'll begin by looking at general fund revenue. As I mentioned, we are projecting a $9.1 million overall surplus in terms of general fund revenue. We continue to see growth in the city's two largest revenue streams, our income tax and our property tax. Our income tax projection takes into account the overall growth that the city experienced for income tax revenue in FY '25, and assumes the impact of that growth as we go into FY ' '26. Property tax, the property tax surplus is driven by an overall improvement in the taxable -- in the overall growth of our taxable base that's subject to real property tax. On the flip side, some of the risk areas for the city's general fund would include the transfer and recordation tax that reflects a general slowing of our real estate market, and the timing of assumed revenue increases that were part of the fiscal '26 budget, notably our recommendations around various increases to fines and fees. On the next slide, you can see a summary of our projection by different revenue category. Again, you can see the projected deficits in licenses and permits and charges for service. So I will now walk through major variations by each revenue source. So we'll begin with the largest projected surplus in income tax. So in FY '26, we assumed $493 million in income tax revenue, and based off of our first quarter analysis, we're projecting year-end revenue of $510 million that would result in a $16.5 million surplus, or 3.3% positive variation. As I was mentioning, when we were finalizing the projection for income tax for FY '26, we were relying on guidance from the state to reduce overall growth in income tax revenue. And that was reflective of what we were seeing in the broader employment market, especially as we were monitoring the impact of potential federal cuts in workforce for the state of Maryland. What we saw in FY '25 was that there was overall growth in income tax revenue far beyond what was originally forecasted. And so what we have seen through the first quarter of FY '26 is that growth has continued. And so we're projecting that there's a 2.4% growth in statewide cash that's collected from withholdings that then is available for dispersment back to local jurisdictions. Part of what is helping us out here is that as we see that continued overall growth at the state level, we have to remember that we had downgraded our forecast last year when we were finalizing the FY '26 budget. We had actually reduced anticipated revenue by $5.8 million. And so we're actually beating our projection, and we're not realizing that anticipated loss of revenue. The other thing that is driving this surplus is the unallocated withholding portion of our income tax revenue. So as you recall, when I was here to talk to you about the fiscal '25 closeout data, I had reported that we received a very large unallocated dispersment from the state in June. And so in our projection here, we're using the five-year average for what we can anticipate regarding that unallocated dispersment that we'll see in June. So that's contributing to about a $3 million surplus in this projection. Next up will be property taxes. So in fiscal '26, we've assumed $1.2 billion in property tax revenue. Based off of our first quarter projection, we're anticipating $1.21 billion in revenue. So that's positive variation of 13.8 million, or 1.1%. Keeping in mind that the property tax includes both the personal property tax component and the real property tax component, we are projecting $6.4 million in an overall surplus from the personal property tax, and a $4.9 million surplus on the real property tax side. In terms of personal property taxes, the driver of the surplus there is overall assessment increases in BG&E property that's subject to the personal property tax. And those assessments are sort of updated on a rolling basis, which is why we're seeing the overall growth in FY '26. On the real property tax side, the real story here is that we've seen a marked improvement in terms of the city's overall real property tax base. And that's driven by a number of properties that have had a significant impact on our assessed value. Some of the notable assessment increases would include a property in Harbor Point, the 100 Will Street property. That has been reassessed, and that's generating $8.9 million in new revenue for the city. The 4 MLK Building off of MLK Boulevard across as part of the Biopark is generating $2.8 million in new recurring revenue. And 2601 North Port Covington Drive down in the Port Covington development is now generating $2 million of recurring new revenue. At the same time, we have seen some notable assessment decreases, and the one thing to keep in mind with assessment decreases is that we realize the full impact of that right away. Some of the largest ones include the Social Security Building. That has been reassessed, and that was a loss of about $800,000 worth of revenue. And 100 Pratt Street, which is the old T. Rowe Price Building, has been reassessed, and that has resulted in a $600,000 decline in revenue. If we go to the next slide, we will see highway user revenue, which has a fiscal '26 budget of $271.9 million. We're projecting $274.9 million in revenue. So that's $3 million of positive variation, or about 1.1% higher than our budget assumptions. A couple of drivers here include an increase in the state titling excise tax that increased from 6% to 6.5%. That's producing additional revenue. The projection also accounts for a change in the rental car registration fee discount that, at a state level, was eliminated. And so now, all rental cars are subject to a 3.5% tax. And then that factors into our overall HUR dispersment, which is helping to contribute to the surplus. Of note, though, we do continue to see large components of the HUR allocation bucket decline. Most notably, the motor vehicle fuel tax is down by 2.6% year-over-year, and motor vehicle registration is down by 9.1% year-over-year. One of the things I want to remind the Committee is that we closely monitor the HUR projection in relation to the expenditures within the Department of Transportation. Any surplus revenue that we see here, if DOT is also projecting a surplus, that means we have more money available for capital. And so this is something that we'll be closely monitoring as we continue through the fiscal year. And if it looks like this trend is continuing, and we have some savings that we can count on in the Department of Transportation, that's when we would be bringing a supplemental back through the Board of Estimates and the City Council so that we could allocate these dollars directly back into the DOT capital program. Next up is parking revenue. In fiscal '26, we had a total budget of $22 million. Based off of our first quarter projection, we're anticipating $24.2 million, which results in a $2 million surplus, or 10.2% positive variation. Year-to-date, we have seen that the number of parking citations, the late fees from parking fines, collections from the property tax, as well as parking garage income, those are higher than the same period in FY '25. The other item that's driving our surplus here is that the way that the parking revenue works is the revenue and the expenditures flow through the city's Parking Management Fund, and then what's left at the end of the year is transferred to the General Fund. And so what we're also seeing here is that there's some savings in terms of our parking management costs. That's mostly in parking enforcement costs within the Department of Transportation, as well as some debt service costs that are helping to also contribute to this overall surplus. We are assuming that in the second half of FY '26 that we would be bringing a package before the Committee that would increase fines that would fall in this category, that would also help to generate additional revenue. Next up is our traffic cameras. We had a total budget of $29.5 million. And based off of our first quarter projection, we're anticipating $28.6 million in revenue. That's a $1 million deficit, or 3.1% negative variation. Our traffic cameras include both of our speed cameras, as well as our red light cameras are the largest components. And just as a reminder, this is our citywide program. It does not include the cameras that are located on the 83 corridor. So when we look at what's happening within our program, speed cameras are projected to have a $2 million deficit. This is coming from, in the budget, we had assumed that we would be redeploying 30 cameras to new locations throughout the city. That relocation has been delayed, which is resulting in a slight decline in anticipated revenue. We're anticipating that the collection rate remains steady at about 52%, which is consistent with our prior-year trend. The other thing to note is that we're assuming additional revenue from the implementation of the tiered fines. So that's where the fine increases, the value of the fine will increase as the severity of the infraction increases. The implementation of those tiered fines was authorized by the General Assembly in last year's session and took effect on October 1 of this year. And so we've assumed $1.9 million in revenue from that tiered structure. We'll be able to see that actual data as part of our second quarter projection and can provide an update at that point. On the red light camera side, we're projecting a $1 million surplus, and this is primarily due to the annualization of 20 new cameras that came online late in FY '25. Next up, we have tax credits that are, where we had a budgeted cost for this program of $94.2 million, but we're assuming, we're projecting the cost to be $96.3 million. So that's variance of $2.2 million, or 3.5%. Most of this deficit is associated with the enterprise zone tax credit, where we are projecting a $3.7 million deficit. And that's related to two large credits that kicked in and were not part of our original budget forecast. Those are tied to two of the properties I mentioned earlier, which is the Harbor Point property, the 1,000 Will Street, and the 4 MLK Building along MLK Boulevard. On the flip side, we are seeing where we have some surpluses in a handful of credits. The largest ones would be in our Brownfield Program. That's projected a $400,000 surplus, and that relates to sort of lower activity compared to what we had assumed. And our High Performance Market Rate Rental Tax Credit has a $400,000 projected surplus. And again, this is based off of assessment revisions for properties that are eligible for that credit. Next up is hotel tax. In FY '26, we had an assumed budget of $28.5 million. We're projecting revenue of $24.9 million, or a $3.6 million deficit, a negative 12.5% variation. What we're seeing here is that there's been an overall decline in demand for hotel rooms in our city, and so that's really hitting us two ways when it relates to our hotel tax. What we're seeing is that we have lower occupancy rates. So year-over, in the first quarter of FY '25, our occupancy rate was over 62%. In the first quarter of FY '26, we were down to 60%. The other factor here is that because the occupancy rates are declining and demand is down, the average nightly room rate of our hotels is also declining. So if we look at that average nightly room rate in the first quarter of FY '25, we were at just over $180 a night, and now we're down to $175 a night. So this is an important trend that we're closely monitoring, because if you look at the actual trend going back to FY '22, FY '22 was really the beginning of rebounding from the COVID-19 pandemic, where our hotel taxes essentially went to zero. But what we're seeing is that we've essentially lost all that growth that we have seen, that we saw post-pandemic. We're working closely with our partners at Visit Baltimore, as well as BDC and the Convention Center, to sort of understand how we combat this as part of a broader strategy. But we do know that there's a number of market forces in terms of tourism and just an overall decline that we, you know, we're seeing across the region. Again, this is something that we're closely monitoring, and we'll continue to keep the Council updated as we move through FY '26. And the final revenue I would like to highlight is transfer and recordation taxes. This is the revenue stream where we have the largest projected shortfall. We had an assumed budget of $104.8 million. We're projecting $94.6 million. So that's a $10.2 million deficit. What we're seeing is that there is an overall decline in the number of transactions. So if we look, if we compare to the same period in FY '25, the overall number of transactions is down by 9.7%. However, we continue to see growth in the value of transactions, which is good news because that means our residential properties in the city are holding their value. If we look at the average value of a home sale for the first quarter in FY '25, that was just over $273,000. For that same period in FY '26, it was $278,000. This is something that is largely driven by what's happening in the broader real estate market. We know that this slowdown that we're seeing is consistent with the broader real estate market and broader trends. One of the things that could have a positive impact here would be any sort of meaningful change in interest rates. If we did see that the mortgage interest rate would continue to decline, we can anticipate that this revenue might come back a little bit, because any refinancing activity would be subject to our recordation tax, and we do know that individuals in higher mortgage rates might start to come back and look to refinance. So next up, I will switch gears and talk about our expenditure projection. So as I mentioned, we are anticipating an overall deficit of $12.4 million. I do want to flag that our first quarter projection was a little bit more challenging than what we would have in prior years, and that was because of the uncertainty around the ongoing negotiations with our union partners regarding the union contracts for FY '26. So because we were negotiating with all nine of our unions, we are getting those contracts across the finish line a little later than we normally would. And so what that meant in our first quarter projections is that we needed to anticipate what we think those contracts will cost in the individual agency budgets, not only for the wages going forward, but what that would mean in terms of back pay implications. And so we have a lot of assumptions in here to try to account for those costs. We are continuing to see an overall decline in the number of general fund vacancies. If we look at vacancies compared to the same period of October 24 versus October 25, our sworn vacancies are down by 18%, and our uns sworn vacancies are down by 12%. We are seeing positive improvement in terms of the number of agencies that are trending over budget compared to where we were a year ago. However, we continue to see overruns in some of our public safety agencies that I'll describe in a couple of slides. So first up, I want to spend just a couple more minutes talking about vacancies, because I know it's something of the utmost importance to the Council. If we look at our general fund vacancies as of October 25, we had 1,450 vacancies. So that was a vacancy rate of about 14.6%. As I mentioned, we're down by 16% compared to a year ago, so these trends are going in the right direction. When we look at these overall number of vacancies, you can see that 717 of those vacancies, so just under 50%, would fall into nine classifications. And you can see them listed there. Obviously, police officer is our highest vacant position, followed by office support specialists, and then we have a number of classifications that are spread across multiple agencies. I do want to note, one of the classifications listed here is the investigative specialist, and that is a classification that is utilized by the Police Department as part of their civilianization efforts. So when we talk about civilianizing an activity in the department, what BPD is coming, what BPD is doing is they're coming back through and creating these investigative specialists to perform those functions. The 16 vacancies that we see here are the product of positions that were created at the start of FY '26, and so the agency is actively working on filling those vacancies. And in fact, they have, as of November 1, they had filled eight of those positions. They have, and then many of the positions that had been created in prior years have been filled. And so just wanted to note that that's one that we would anticipate to come off of this list as BPD continues to work through those recruitment efforts. So now what I'll do is I will walk through the agency projections. We're going to begin by talking about surplus agencies where the primary driver of the surplus is vacant positions. And then we will talk about agencies that have a significant projected surplus, agencies that are projected at budget, and then we'll end with agencies that are projected to have a deficit. So we have, as of our first quarter projections, we have 13 agencies where salary savings are the primary drivers of their surplus. The vacancies in these positions represent 35% of those, of that total 1,400 vacancies. You can see the list here in terms of the agencies. What I will note is that many of these agencies are in different stages of recruitment for key positions. You know, for example, the Department of Housing and Community Development has submitted a package of position creations as part of funding that was included in their FY '26 budget to include or to support the Vacants Initiative. The Office of Information and Technology received some new money in FY '26 to transition contractual work to permanent full-time positions. Those positions have been getting created on a monthly basis, and they're recruiting for many of those positions as we move through the fiscal year. So next up, we will talk about agencies with a significant surplus. So this is a surplus of greater than 10%. So first up would be the Board of Elections, which has a projected surplus of $2.5 million, and that's related to their anticipated election costs this year. The Convention Complex is projected to have a $3.6 million surplus. Just a reminder, the way we budget the convention, what we call the Convention Complex, that would include the Convention Center, but it also includes our revenue sharing contribution back to CFT Arena. So they, as part of the terms of the agreement, they receive a portion of the admission and amusement tax that's generated at the facility. And based off of the actual trends, that contribution back to CFT is less than what we had assumed in the budget. That is also, also has a corresponding impact on the revenue side as well. We're realizing less admissions and amusement tax. The Mayor's Office of Employment Development has a $1.5 million surplus, and that is just due to the actual cost for the Youth Works Program based off of the summer 2025 program. And then the Board of Municipal Zoning and Appeals has a $125,000 surplus due to some turnover in agency personnel. Next up, we will go through agencies that are projected at budget, so that's within 10% variance. So first up, we have Council Services, just a small surplus of $25,000. No major variance there. Circuit Court has a projected surplus of $1.5 million. Nearly all of that is coming from budgeted costs for juror stipends. So that's the $30 payment that gets paid back to jurors for their daily service. The actual trends are coming in lower than what we had assumed in the budget. The Department of Human Resources has a $324,000 surplus. That's coming from various contractual costs and a couple of vacant positions. The Department of Legislative Reference has a $148,000 surplus. That's based off of lower-than-anticipated costs associated with a new lease for the archive space, as well as the timing for some new positions that were authorized by the Council as part of the '26 budget. On the next slide, we have the Liquor License Board, which has a small surplus of $12,000. The Convention Center Hotel has a projected surplus of $506,000. That is coming from lower-than-anticipated costs from the city to the hotel. If you'll remember, there's a backstop as part of the agreement with the Convention Center Hotel that the city would need to contribute if revenues fall below a certain level. And so their revenues are trending in a direction where it doesn't look like they will need the full contribution we have assumed in '26. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has a $1.2 million surplus. This is related to anticipated savings from the various contracts that we have in place for shelters, as well as a handful of vacant positions. The Mayor's Office of Small Minority Business Advocacy and Development has a $194,000 surplus. This is coming from a combination of contractual services, as well as a couple of vacant positions. And on the next slide, we have, the Environmental Control Board has a $62,000 surplus. They had reallocated some funding in their budget to create a new position in FY '26, and so this is just reflective of that position coming online a little later in the fiscal year. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights has an $85,000 surplus. This is coming from a combination of vacant positions, as well as board stipends. The Office of Inspector General has a $99,000 projected surplus. This is coming from anticipated savings from how the health insurance costs are hitting their budget. And then finally, the Planning Department has a $79,000 projected surplus. This is coming from a combination of non-personnel lines like travel and professional services. And then finally, our agencies that are projected to have a deficit for, based off of first quarters. So first up is the Fire Department. That's anticipated to have a $25.6 million deficit. This is primarily coming from ongoing overtime costs as the department works to get new recruits through the academy and reduce the overall number of vacancies in the department. The Office of the Labor Commissioner has a $380,000 deficit related to legal fees associated with the ongoing union negotiations. The Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication has a deficit of, an anticipated deficit of $197,000, and that is related to being fully staffed. There was an assumption that there would be some turnover savings in that budget that's not being realized. The Art and Culture Grants are projected to have a $376,000 deficit. This is related to the benefit costs that are provided for the Baltimore Museum of Art and Walter's Art Gallery positions as part of the city's agreement. City Schools is anticipated to have a $1 million deficit, and this is related to a payment that the city needs to make to the state for the pre-K component of the Blue for the pre-K component of the blueprint. This was a payment that the city learned about after the, the budget was finalized. The city, like all other jurisdictions, received notice of this in early July. And so this was a, a payment that was not factored into any of our budgets because we received late information from the State Department of Education. And then for, on the last slide, we have our, our final batch. The Police Department has an estimated $14.9 million projected deficit. This is coming from sworn overtime, as well as some obligations from the recently ratified contract with the police union. Recreation and Parks has a $402,000 deficit. This is coming from facility maintenance costs. And then finally, the Sheriff's Office has an anticipated $1.4 million deficit. It's coming from a combination of overtime, as well as various non-personnel spending. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Director Lawson. We've also been joined by our Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton. I'm going to start with, thank you. I'm going to start with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. And you noted that there were savings due to fewer filled UFRC slots versus the budgeted amount. For this was, were there fewer applicants to the UFRC program? Or what is, what is, what was driving the fewer filled slots?
Yeah, so the way that we budget for Youth Works is we assume that all of, for the number of funded slots, we assume that all of those individuals will complete the full duration of the program. What we saw for this summer is that the demand was much higher than the number of slots that we had funded in the FY '26 budget. So folks were turned, you know, individuals who had applied were turned away from the program. But the savings is coming from the fact that not all of the spots that we had funded completed the program. And so that is just reflective of, you know, the portion of participants that fell off before the end of the, the summer program.
How many participants did we have in total? And how many participants did we have that were unable to complete the program?
Let me see if I, I may have that number. If not, we will defer and follow up with our colleagues. So we had budgeted 8,500 slots for FY '26. And based off of analysis from MOED as part of our first quarter, they had 7,600 individuals that finished the program.
So we had 900 children who didn't finish the program?
That's correct.
Okay. What were the reasons that were provided that they didn't finish the program? What, what reasons were provided from MOED? Was it transportation? What were, what were the issues?
I do not have that information as part of what we received for our quarterly forecast, but I can take that as a follow-up. And we can coordinate with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to provide a written follow-up to the council on that item.
Yes, as a committee request, we definitely need detailed information on, and I'm sure that MOED would have this, why these 900 kids didn't make it through the program.
I will also say on this topic, the, as part of our first quarter review, this was, you know, the first time that we were reviewing, this was when we were reviewing sort of the budgetary impact of that trend with the administration. And they are, you know, they're currently analyzing, working with MOED to analyze what happened in summer of fiscal, in this summer's program to understand what modifications need to be made to the program moving forward, as well as any sort of decisions about how these funds get deployed for the remainder of FY '26.
It's a, it's a pretty large percentage. I'm sure it's important to every council member. Knowing that we want to make sure that these kids have something to do during the, during the summit is actually productive. The other question I had was regarding an amount that we assumed from the implementation of the tiered fines. So this is regarding the traffic cameras. Out of the 1.9 million projection that you had, we know that there is a delay in relocating an amount of these speed cameras. So how much of the 1.9 million is related to the speed cameras versus the red light cameras that are actually at a surplus right now?
Yeah, so if we, for our traffic camera projection, we're anticipating $28.6 million in revenue. We had budgeted $29.5 million. So we have an anticipated $2 million deficit on the speed camera side and a $1 million deficit on the, on the red light side. Most of that deficit, nearly all of the deficit, is coming from anticipated additional revenue that was coming from relocating the cameras, which we know will be delayed. In the budget, we had assumed that we would receive $1.9 million in additional revenue from implementing the tiered fines. And based off of our first quarter projection, we're assuming that we would realize all of that $1.9 million revenue, $1.9 million in revenue. However, we're, we're monitoring that information because that, those fines came online during the second quarter. So we'll update our projection to reflect, you know, the first quarter of having those tiered fines as part of our second quarter work.
Okay, I'm looking forward to the, the second quarter numbers. Committee members, did we have any questions? VP, Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to talk a little bit with, about the Office of Children and Family Success. Sunday, I saw, Sunday morning, on, I think it's the show Sunday morning, I saw this doc, documentary on the abuse of motels that have been converted into basically shelters, helping people that work, but they still don't have enough money to pay for rent. And found out that the Security Deposit Relief Act does not have any funding in it right now. And that was a avenue, at least for Baltimore, to help families, single women with children, even couples that go out to work every day, but still do not have money to pay for rent to live in an apartment. And that's part of the reason we, right now, have an influx of homeless. We have an elementary school that's going to be turned into a shelter. That office is a very important office. It stretches far and few for all types of programs. And I just think that you really have to be careful and think hard as we're going through this phase of also buying hotels. And I know that there's been a plan. I know that you were trying to make sure they're only housed in these places for like 90 days.
Okay, we have action. Welcome back to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are going to get back to our Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton, where she left off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make a long story short, the motels that were mentioned in this documentary, and it was cities like Memphis and some other cities, that clearly Baltimore has similar issues. I just want to make sure that as we're moving surplus money around, really pay attention to programs that are helping people. We're at a time where, this is what all of our jobs are about, the people. And if there are programs that are successful in keeping people out of shelters, that's savings and a lot of money. And I don't want programs like the Security Deposit Relief Act and just other programs, particularly in this Office of Children and Family Success, to be forgotten because of ARPA money. It's just so, that these were programs that were, could have been, you know, was funded by that money, but it should have given an opportunity for the city to figure out what the greatest needs are and work and continue to help people that way. I don't want to see families that work two and three jobs in this city and still can't live in an apartment of their own, a nice, clean apartment for a family. It's just, we're, this city is about building families. And I want to, I want you to comment, but I want everyone to be aware how important that office is and every program that's in it.
Yeah, and, you know, share the understanding and the, the priority of these services. So, you know, part of this crosses a couple of different city agencies. So we have the, the work that happens in the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success in terms of connecting folks at the CAP centers with different resources. And then we have the, the work of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services in terms of operating the shelters, the street outreach, and then, you know, working with folks to get them into, to permanent housing. This has been, when I think about homelessness and how we react and how we support individuals experiencing homelessness, I would say it is one of the top services that is fundamentally different post-pandemic. So if we think about how we were sheltering individuals before the pandemic, we had them, you know, all, like, pretty much exclusively in Congaree facilities. We had a, with, with a number of exceptions, and a lot of those were in surplus buildings. And so, you know, we had to pivot quickly in the pandemic. And now we're, you know, we've been cobbling together temporary fund, funding sources in order to keep things going until we establish the new normal. And I think that's where we are right now, where Director Simmons is working to establish what that new normal is. And I think, you know, also looking at understanding that getting individuals into stable housing is, it's a, it's a cheaper alternative. But first and foremost, it's better for individuals, ensuring that that core need is being met. So I think you see that being addressed in the FY '26 budget a couple of ways. You know, there were significant investments that were made in homeless services as part of the FY '26 budget in terms of increasing funding for various contracts. There were also funds that were part of opioid settlement dollars that were named in individual settlements to look at how we take street outreach and make it a 24/7 operation. But we also saw, in terms of the Mayor's recent announcement coming in the wake of the federal government shutdown, where he was redeploying resources to be focused on, you know, ongoing eviction prevention, various food assistance, looking at childcare. And so as we, you know, as part of our quarterly projection, we're not proposing any sort of reallocation here. These are just our projections based off of the information that we had through the first quarter. And it also, we're also at a point in time where we are thinking about FY '27 and putting, agencies currently right now are putting together their FY '27 budget proposals so they can be evaluated by the administration, you know, after we come back from the holidays. As part of that effort, we're evaluating different services and operations that had received ARPA funding that will expire in FY '27 to leverage insights from different evaluation that has taken place to understand where we're getting results and where we have evidence of these investments so that they can guide how we need to think about that on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, appreciate that. And just another bullet point on the same subject. There is so much fraud and out here, particularly affecting the vulnerable population. And we also, as a city, have to be careful, the people that we work with on the outside of the city, helping us, and are they really helping us? Or are they scamming us?
Certainly. And I think too, that's where a lot of the foundational work that the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs put in place in terms of subrecipient monitoring really sets a blueprint and a framework for the city to be doing that on an ongoing basis and a more comprehensive basis across all of our various grant programs that we administer.
Thank you, thank you for the conversation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as we talk about the vacancies, they are going down, which is great. But I would love to know, are they going down because of the hiring? Or is it a combination of the elimination of pins?
A combination of, of both. What we saw is that if you look at monthly vacancy numbers, you actually saw them trend up in FY, in July because we were picking up the new positions that had been created. But even with those new positions that had been created, we're still moving downward in a positive direction. So if we look at, you know, our vacancies in October of last year, we were just under 1,700. In June of '25, we were at 1,500, and in October, we're at 1,450. And so we do sort of see this steady decline downward. I think a lot of, you know, what, and a lot of that is driven, we see it both on the civilian and the sworn side. But we see that particularly in police and fire, we have some of our most successful recruitment activities happening that we've seen in recent years, which is incredibly important in order to get those positions filled. Number one, to provide relief to our existing employees who have, you know, been backfilling shifts through overtime. But number two, it just provides both of those departments closer to a fully staffed level. And so then we see less reliance on overall overtime. The one thing that's important to keep in mind, especially with the sworn stuff, is even though these trends are moving in the right direction and we see the downward decline, when we hire a new recruit, they go into a PIN. But if they're training to be a police officer, or a firefighter, or an EMT, there's a period of time that they're not available to actually be part of the or an EMT, there's a period of time that they're not available to actually be part of the shift rotation. So, you know, that's anywhere from four months to a year before those individuals have the training and the expertise, you know, to be fully onboarded and included into the shift schedule. And so, some of the relief that we are seeing from, you know, the classes that are going through right now, we're not fully seeing the overtime relief yet because folks are still in the academy.
Okay. And then as far as the elimination of pins, do you have a number of how many were eliminated since fiscal year '24?
I can provide that as a follow-up item. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Perfect. We can make that a committee request. And then also for the traffic cameras, do we know how many citations are being issued that are, that remain unpaid? Because the projection assumes the 52.3% collection rate, but fewer people are registered in their vehicle. And I'm not sure and maybe concerned that maybe a portion of those people, well, a good number, if you drive these roads, just could be unsafe drivers and people that don't care. But it also could be a good portion of those folks that just can't afford to pay the ticket. And we see that our state legislators actually doubled the fine. And just generally, I just don't believe that just doubling the fine and making things harder for folks will force them to come to the table. We tried that with Pram and we saw what we got. And so, I would just like to know where are we seeing those deficits in the program? Because I really think that that could kind of give us insight to like how we can move forward in ensuring that we can increase those revenues.
Yeah. So, again, in our first quarter projection, the primary contributing factor to the deficit is the timing of relocating cameras. In the budget, we said we were going to relocate these thirty at the beginning of the year. For whatever reason, that is, is not happening. When we talk about the collection rate being at 52%, that is factored into what we have assumed for revenue. So, because it's at 52%, that's not what is sort of contributing to the overall deficit. With these citations, what we see is that, for whatever reason, they, there are a number of, a universe of citations, about 48% that don't end up getting paid in the year that they were issued. But they ultimately do end up getting paid. So, if we look at collection rates for traffic camera citations to the inception of the program, we're between 70 and 75%. So, what it means is, an individual who gets a citation in October of 2025, they might not pay that in fiscal '25. But maybe they'll come and they'll pay that in October of 2026, for whatever reason. Maybe they want to register their vehicle or whatever the case may be. Then they will come back and they will pay that citation. And so, then we see it sort of being collected. And so, every year, we sort of, we experience kind of for the citations in that year, about a 52% collection rate. But we know that there's going to be some universe of outstanding citations from prior years that are also going to be paid.
Okay. And have you seen that number trend up or down recently? Because, you know, contributing factors could be the pandemic, also because folks are now finding it easier and easier just to go to any shop on any major road in Baltimore to get a VA tag. Is it trending up? Are more and more folks just deciding that they're just not paying, even if it's a slight increase? And once again, where do you contribute that to?
Yeah. I'm going to refer to Pedro Alpontei, who is our Assistant Budget Director, who oversees the revenue program.
Good morning, Pedro Alpontei, Assistant Budget Director. We haven't seen any change in the collection pattern. Actually, it might have been improved. We used to see 72%. Right now, it's a 73%. There's no clear indicator what is determining that. I know that there are some actions that we pursue with the Bureau of Revenue Collection, sending some unpaid citations to the NBA, MBA flags those individuals. In terms of collection, it's pretty standard. It's very, as it's 72, as the director said, between seven and 75% historically.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious because, you know, until we fix the issue of folks just being able to get a VA tag anywhere in Baltimore, I feel like those numbers will can just continue just to be down. And ultimately, we're the, we're not getting that revenue because people can find an alternative to get away from it. So, but thank you.
Yep.
As a quick follow-up, knowing that there's a 9.1% decline in motor vehicle registrations, and knowing that there is a prevalent increase in drivers who are accessing, obtaining, excuse me, Virginia tags, and I'm not sure if this is still the case, but I know at one point, the reason why a lot of people were getting Virginia tags is that you can go off of that lot without obtaining insurance.
Yeah.
And this may be for the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Before you step away, going into this session, the state session, does the administration have a plan or are they working with legislators regarding Virginia tags and how it's impacting Baltimore City? Is there active legislation that they are partnering on or that they're supporting for this upcoming session?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll take that back to our state team and provide the committee with a written response, if that's okay with you.
Can we get that response by tomorrow?
Yes. Yep, that's fine.
I appreciate it. And if we know if there were any prefiled bills, what legislators you guys are working with, if you put forward anything, any significant contribution to any legislation as well.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
Councilmember Schleifer?
No. Do we have any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
So, we're now going to hear from the Department of Planning, and they have a presentation at this time.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Parnilam. I'm the Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis with the Baltimore City Department of Planning. Thank you for inviting us to provide an update on the appropriations and expenditures for the capital budget. Sorry. Can you hear me better? The Department of Planning provided a report for the council that provides for every project that has not yet been closed or in a pending close status or canceled, the information that you see on the screen. So, this is a summary by agency, but we did provide an extensive report that has the same information for every capital project. So, you can see here that the information provided includes the total appropriations. The appropriations for capital projects don't expire at the end of the fiscal year. So, these are cumulative total appropriations for these agencies listed here and in the report for individual projects. You can also see the total expenditures over the life of the project and the total obligation. So, if an agency has encumbered funds, you will see that included in the obligations. And then to provide context for those totals, we have included both the fiscal year '25 capital budget as well as the fiscal year '26 capital budget. So, you can see of those total appropriations, how much of that is recent appropriations from the current fiscal year and the preceding fiscal year. And then, again, to give some context to those total expenditures, we've provided some context about which ones are recent. So, you can see the FY25 expenditures as well as the expenditures so far for fiscal year '26 through the first quarter. And so, because this is the first report for fiscal year '26, for the remainder of the presentation, I really wanted to focus in on the, you can go to the next slide, wanted to focus in on the appropriations and expenditures, particularly for projects that have appropriations in fiscal year '26. So, that's what's captured on the slides, kind of agency by agency. So, this is not showing you the total appropriations and the total expenditures for these agencies. It's showing you specifically for those projects that have funding in fiscal year '26. So, if we start with DGS, you can see that the fiscal year '26 budget for the Department of General Services was $15 million, $350,000. And you can see here, you know, the list of projects. And for these projects, you can see the information that I mentioned. So, you can see the total appropriations for each of these projects, as well as expenditures, the obligations, whether they received funding in FY25 in addition to FY26, expenditures in FY25, and then the expenditures so far in fiscal year '26 for quarter one. Can you get the next slide? And so, we have the same information for each agency. So, for Housing and Community Development, unlike the Department of General Services, which is mostly focused on discrete construction projects, for the Department of Housing and Community Development, we have a lot of ongoing programs. And so, you see projects listed here that have funding repeated for every fiscal year. For Baltimore Development Corporation, the total fiscal year '26 budget was $6 million. And you can see here the projects that received funding in fiscal year '26. Like Housing and Community Development, Baltimore Development Corporation is mostly ongoing programs. So, they have the facade improvement program, the Innovation Fund, funding for infrastructure in the Inner Harbor, a new program for the small assistance, small business assistance program. For Information Technology, the FY26 budget was $6 million, $750,000. You can see here the projects that were included in the FY26 budget for B sit. So, we have some infrastructure for CityWatch. We have funds for modernizing the tax application. We have funds for the refresh of the permitting system as some of the projects that received funding. For Public Works, the total FY26 budget is $562 million, and that is broken down into four different bureaus. So, we have the Solid Waste Bureau at $29 million for FY26. This is much larger than typical. We have $21 million for the East Side Transfer Station, and that is particularly for the first phase for improvements to the existing administrative building. And then we have for the three utilities. So, the first one listed here is for the stormwater utility. And then if we go to the next slide, we have wastewater. And then we have the water supply. And so, for each of these utilities, you will see projects for their facility improvements. You will see projects for maintenance of their horizontal assets for the pipes, as well as the large infrastructure projects for like the wastewater treatment plant. And then for Recreation and Parks, the total FY26 budget is $29 million. This is coming from a combination of local sources as well as state program open space funds. We have a lot of funding in FY26 to try and complete the funding needed to be able to implement projects that received funding in prior years. And then for the Department of Transportation, the total FY26 budget is $180 million. This is a combination of highway user revenue and federal highway funds. For Transportation, we have projects for kind of all of the different modes. So, you'll see projects here for pedestrian improvements. We have a very significant investment in ADA. So, you'll see $12 million for the ADA partial consent decree as its own line item. But you will see in the $13 million for sidewalk reconstruction, as well as other line items for ADA improvements. Transportation also includes street resurfacing projects. It includes traffic improvement projects. It includes our bridges. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Division Chief Parnilam. We're going to start with Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you tell us what the Planning Department's role is on the permitting system?
I'm not the right person to speak to the Planning Department's role in the permit system, but we can follow up and have someone provide that information to the council.
Gotcha. So, on any of the items that you just went through, are you guys like involved in those projects or?
The permitting system? There is a project in B sit for the software for the permit system.
No, no, but I'm saying you went through a bunch of different projects that are going on now. So, what's like the Planning Department's role in some of those projects?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, we went through, you just presented on a lot of capital projects that are going on. And I was just curious what the Planning Department's role is on any of those projects, what support you guys are providing, what your role is, what you guys are doing in regards to any of those projects?
Yeah. So, it depends on the project. So, some of the projects will trigger Planning Department reviews and go through a permitting review as well as other. We partner with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development that is taking the lead in terms of addressing project delivery obstacles for projects. So, they're looking at both the overall processes to improve project delivery, as well as looking at individual projects and how can we move those forward. So, that's something that we're working with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. Once a project is funded, how do we make sure that the city can deliver on that project?
Right. So, that's the question is, what are you guys doing to see those projects through or to deliver on those projects? Like, can you just give us an example of a project that without the Planning Department's existence would not be moving forward and happening today?
So, the Park Heights Library is an example of a project that the Planning Department helped to fund, as well as participated in interagency meetings to move that project forward. So, that was a partnership with the Department of General Services, with libraries, with Recreation and Parks, with Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, all working together to achieve that groundbreaking.
So, on that project, what did you guys physically do? Other than review plans, part of the permitting? Or what did the Planning Department do to make sure that that project happens?
We participated in that interagency convening to move that project forward. So, we helped make sure that all of the steps were moving forward. There was a state grant that needed to happen. We followed up. We followed up in terms of making sure that libraries was following up on that state grant.
So that project wouldn't happen if not for the Planning Department?
Yes, but the primary role that the Planning Department plays is in terms of the, the funding of the project, of, of making recommendations for the funding.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
As a follow-up, is, is there a percentage of projects, I understand what the role is, but is there a percentage of projects that you all do provide technical assistance for? Like you just spoke about the library, do you offhand know like the percentage of projects that the Planning Department actually provides some type of technical assistance for, to these agencies?
It is relatively ad hoc, so I can kind of compile a list, but I don't, I don't have a percentage. It's a, it's a relatively small percentage, if you think about the fact that there's 300, 3,000 capital projects that, that exist. We are involved in kind of that coordination role on a, on a relatively small percentage of the 3,000.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the same lines with the Councilman of the Fifth District, I'll give an example. We share the intersection of Falls Road and Northern Parkway. Lots of development happening there, lots of development happening at Cross Keys. Right across from that, the Falls is adding and expanding. We're getting ready to have a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts, just a big housing project, another, several housing projects right in that area, and we're talking lots of people. That intersection is right off the cuff of 83, just so, in fact, it's one of the top, if not the top, most traveled intersection in the city of Baltimore. Coming, you know, people coming in from Baltimore County, just constantly busy, really 24/7. So much has been delayed on really working hard to update that entire intersection. Accidents almost every week. How, what message and how does the Planning Department, what role do you play in that voice for helping us to move that intersection up the chart with the expansions that are happening around that area?
Yeah, so there is funding in the Department of Transportation's capital project for Falls Road at Northern Parkway for improvements. It looks like in this particular project, and I'll have to look and see if there's any additional projects, but I was able to find one that has 1.9 million dollars of appropriations. And so we can follow up with the Department of Transportation on what the status of that is and, and try and move that project forward.
Are you like an advocate to help with your data? You, you have conversations with the Transportation Department? There's a representative at community meetings from planning at the, you know, that talk about that intersection? Just trying to give an example of the role that planning plays in all of this process?
Yeah, so we have community planners that are active in all parts of the city, and they participate in those conversations. So the planner from our office who, you know, is a representative, for example, for the area for the Park Heights Library, was involved in all of those conversations. It's a different planner for the area at Falls Road and Northern Parkway. And, and so we can, I can follow up with her and see if she knows the status, but we can also talk directly to the Department of Transportation and try and move that forward. Our planners also identify things that we want to make sure that agencies are funding that have come out of plans that they're working on with communities. So for example, working with communities on the Inspire Plans, there were things that were identified in terms of traffic improvements in, in a, in a, not, I don't know if that one came out of an Inspire Plan, but there were ones nearby. And so we are following up with the Department of Transportation to include those in their requests, so that we can identify funding for them.
Thank you. I think that might have been helpful with what Councilman Schleifer was trying to-
Thank you, sorry, I wasn't quite following the-
Just to clearly, you, your office has, your office has a lot of details, and you have liaisons at work, and I think he was trying to get a clearer picture of the roles of actually how planning plays into helping these agencies.
Yes, so we play a big role in helping to identify projects and then, and then move some of those forward. We're not involved in every single one, but especially those that are community priorities that have surfaced through a community planning process.
Was that helpful, Councilwoman Schleifer?
No.
Did anyone, I was going to say, did anybody else want to give it a shot and try? No? Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, Councilwoman Schleifer.
Yeah, so the last time we had your, your out, I assume the outgoing director's already out, or is he?
He is.
Okay, so the last time, he was, he was before the council, I had asked him about what he called like his signature program, the Clean Core Program. Can you, can you give us an update on that? Because we were told it was a two-year program. More than two years has passed. I see some of their signs up in my district, but then I also see those, the area around where their signs are sitting are full of trash. So is that program still going, and what's the status of it?
It is still going, and similar to permitting. I'm not the expert on that, that component of the Planning Department, but I would be happy to follow up and provide you with the right contacts and the right information on, on Clean Core.
Yeah, if you can just have whoever that contact is just email me or the committee just a status update of where the program stands, how much money of the 15 million dollars is left, and what neighborhoods they're currently working in. And if I can just ask a district-specific, if they can just let me know what days and times they're in neighborhoods in my district and what neighborhoods? I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Division Chief Paranellum. We are going to move to the Baltimore City Public Schools.
Good morning, Chair and Committee members. I'm Courtney DeZebay, Executive Director of Financial Systems for Baltimore City Public Schools. We can go ahead to slide four. Thank you. So the first slide for our quarter one general fund revenue, it shows our general fund revenue by source. As you can see, the greatest sources of funding for us, of course, are State of Maryland, City of Baltimore. State of Maryland, 72%. City Baltimore, 26% of our budget. We compare our budget, our actual revenue with what our estimated revenue is, and essentially looking at where we are comparatively for being 25% into the fiscal year. So we look at a percentage balance. So most of those we expect to see roughly around 75%, somewhere between 75, 60%, depending on the fund source. Some of them are quarterly, some of them are monthly. So nothing outstanding. A lot of our federal revenue is based on reimbursements, which is why, you know, we're seeing a higher percentage there. Our investment earnings this year, we budgeted lower than, even though we had high investment earnings last year, our expectations from our financial advisors were that we shouldn't expect that sort of return again. But again, we're seeing 58% so far for where we are in this year, which is a little high, leading us to think that maybe our end-of-year investment might be a little higher than we expected, but nothing outstanding at this point in terms of revenue. As you know, we're not a self-revenue generating entity. Next slide. This first slide shows our expenditures by category, our state funding categories. So it breaks down our expenditures by administration, instruction, are the major categories. Even though our fiscal year starts in July, school doesn't start till September. So a lot of our position costs, which are 10-month position costs, you don't see the impact of those in the first quarter, because you only have about one month of actual expenditures. So if you see instruction, for example, we've only encumbered 81%. So there's 81% remaining, that's why. Whereas items like student transportation, operation of plant, we do what we call a pre-encumbrance, so we tend to encumber at least six months of a time, at a time, or sometimes for the entire year. So again, you'll see lower percentages there, like 46 and 51%, because we're pre-encumbering a lot of those expenses. So our next slide looks at the expenditures by object group, probably a little bit easier to understand than the state categories. So we have salaries and fringe, which make up 79% of our, our spending. And contractual services, the next largest group at 14%. So those three make up the majority of our budget expenditures. So you can see our unencumbered balances for salary and fringe right around 82%. Again, this is where we expect it to be, even though you would think the threshold, like I said, 75%. Not having a lot of staff on hand for July and August months, you know, delays some of that spending in the first quarter. And contractual services, which ties to what we, I referenced on the last slide with regards to transportation and mechanical services expenditures, is highly encumbered, again, because we pre-encumber a lot of those for the entire fiscal year where we can. The final slide here shows our revenue and expenditures as a comparison, so our total appropriations, including any carryover encumbrances, and our revenues compared to what we've received so far. Again, nothing that gives us any cause for alarm or anything outstanding based on our differences. We do see that our revenue exceeds our expenditures, which of course is what we want to see at this point in the fiscal year. Again, our revenues in a lot of cases come quarterly or monthly, so you're not going to see like our entire revenue, you know, compared against just the one quarter of expenditures. Are there any questions on any of the information presented?
I don't have any questions. I'll thank you for your presentation, Committee members. Vice President Middleton.
Just a curious question. You were here early on when I was talking about homelessness, and what category, I know that you also deal with homeless children and families as well. How, is there a category that that goes in?
Yeah, so there are a couple of categories that would get impacted by that. So mostly it would be our special education category and our transportation categories, because we do have a homeless population who we serve via transportation and special education, so you see that impact in those two categories.
Thank you. Good information. And are you, do you have a relationship with the office, the city's Office of Family and Children, Success?
I, we do, yes. I know the teams communicate frequently on that with our Special Ed Department.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, City Schools.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
So next up, we have LO25-002. And this is for the purpose of calling for quarterly financial oversight hearings regarding a management disbursement and a status of 641 million in federal funding from the ARPA, excuse me, American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. This LO was introduced on January the 13th, 2025, and that's LO Legislative Oversight. We are going to start with a presentation from the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. We have Acting Director Elizabeth Tatum. Yes, and you may sit as soon as you're done with the presentation.
Good morning, Chairperson McCray, Vice President Middleton, and Honorable Members of City Council. My name is Elizabeth Tatum, and I serve as the Chief Recovery Officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs, and I'm pleased to provide you with an update on our progress in implementing ARPA. As of the end of October 2025, with 14 months remaining before the ARPA expenditure deadline, the city has, has expended 533 million dollars, or 83% of the total allocation. Before I begin my presentation, I wanted to note that we are continuing to see the results of ARPA investments in, throughout communities in Baltimore. As you know, ARPA was not only about responding to the immediate and critical needs around the COVID-19 public health emergency, but it's also about bolstering the city's long-term recovery and rebuilding efforts. So I'll highlight, if you'll allow me, just a few of the accomplishments we've seen so far. In the Johnson Square neighborhood, the ARPA-funded portion of the Hammond, which is a new 109-unit affordable housing building, was supported by ARPA. In that same neighborhood, 35 vacant properties were stabilized, and there's also now a Pratt Anywhere satellite location. In 46 city recreation centers across the city, there is free and fast public Wi-Fi. There are 315 seniors who have benefited from housing, the housing upgrades to benefit seniors program, or hubs, seeing their homes repaired and the equity in their homes preserved. And there are 117 residents and counting who have received down payment and renovation assistance to purchase homes through Live Baltimore's Buy Back the Block program. Those are just a few of ARPA's accomplishments. We encourage the public and anyone listening today to follow us on social media or visit our website to view our regular reports, our dashboard, and our stories about how ARPA is positively impacting our community. I, I will note, in terms of the methodology used to prepare this presentation, our office has focused in the past, several briefings on organizations that have spent 50% or less of their award. Because of where we're at in the ARPA timeline, there are very few organizations that meet that threshold anymore, so we've raised it to 75%. I would also like to take a point of privilege to thank every member of the Recovery Office team. This is a team of dedicated public servants who has worked year in and year out, invisible and in, and in invisible ways to steward these funds well, and to make sure that the city meets this opportunity and the moment provided by ARPA. Next slide, please. You'll see here on the screen the list of modified commitments that the city has made in the last quarter. We will continue to provide updates to you as we appear before you on any adjustments that we've made to grants as they close out and as we arrive very close to the expenditure deadline. Treasury does allow us to make modifications under a very strict set of conditions in these final months. There are eight modifications this quarter thus far through October. I won't go through each one individually here, but I will just note that after the obligation deadline, we may not entertain any new projects. The scopes of work that we had in place at the obligation deadline, those are functionally frozen. We can't add scope of work to any of our agreements now that that obligation deadline has passed. So for the modifications that you see here on the screen, we considered a couple of different criteria. So how much funding was under contract and workday, not only committed through an inter-agency agreement, because that signals readiness to spend? The average monthly spend that the project has demonstrated to date? Upcoming milestones between now and the expenditure deadline? The risk of delays? And the city's ability to influence or control those delays? And then the mission of the grant that was reduced? And other projects with similar missions that promise to spend on time? Next slide, please. You'll see here, and I, I won't read through every row, it's in the slides that I prepared in advance, but you can see a list of every single city agency, their award amounts, their expenditures, and the percent expended to date through October. Next slide. These are quasi-governmental and nonprofit. These are quasi-governmental nonprofit organizations. Next slide. So I'll speak about the couple of city agencies that collectively have spent less than 75%. First is the Department of Transportation. One year ago, as of October of 2024, DOT had only spent $754,000 of its 13.1 million award. They've made significant progress and they've spent nearly $8 million since that time. As you'll see on the slide, we expect all sidewalks to be completed by April of 2026 and all ADA ramps to be completed by September. Note that this work, some of this work cannot be completed if there are severe weather conditions like sub-zero temperatures or ice. And because of this DOT schedule and their outputs during the winter months is lower. So they've already taken that into consideration when they built out their schedule and shared these projections with us. Next slide, please. The Department of General Services has six projects. Two are fully expended. The ones that are not expended yet is two, the first two line items you'll see there for the fire department. That, those construction projects are staggered so that we don't have multiple stations offline at the same time. And that funding will all be expended by June of 2026. The HVAC work at six library branches is by and large complete. There are simply a few change orders and punch list items that are being done. And we expect that to be fully spent on time. And then the City Hall roof project. I know we all walk past the scaffolding each, each day. The notice to proceed was issued in December of '24, so less than a year ago. And we expect 30% of the funds to be expended by the end of this calendar year. And then the remainder at the very end of ARPA, December of 2026. And we are in regular conversation with TGS because this project is expected to end the same month that ARPA will end. Next slide. For B sit, I'll highlight the tax software investment for $4 million. This is new tax software that the city is implementing to modernize its system. And the implementation of the software is being covered by other funding sources. ARPA is covering the cost of licensing fees. And then the digital equity fund is $5 million in total. They've fully spent their first round of programmatic grants. There's $1.8 million set aside for the second round of programmatic grants. That was awarded in October of '24. So they've really just had about 12 months to spend. And then a $2 million grant for capital, for a capital project that was awarded in December. So they've had less than 12 months to spend there. So they are actively in conversation with all their grantees about project progress and to make sure that those projects stay on schedule. Next slide, please. For City Services, this is the very last ARPA agreement that we executed. I believe that I signed it on December 30th or December 31st of 2024. So this is a variety of different activities to address the city's backlog of 311 requests. ADA ramps, there are 56 ramps that we completed downtown. The Charm City cleanup effort was funded through this agreement, and that is also complete. And then there's also $1 million that has gone to BCRP for forestry. That work began in September of '25. We expect to see spend there in this next month. There's just a, there's a workday adjustment that needs to be made, and then we'll see spend there. The goal is to have 3,300 trees removed or pruned. And then street maintenance and traffic safety. The ARPA contracts that will, or the, excuse me, the contracts that will do that work, they're currently having ARPA language added to them. And once those contracts are amended, that work will begin as well. Next slide, please. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. You can see here, there are two items to call out. First is the Housing Accelerator Fund. So this is a fund intended to build permanent supportive housing. There are seven major sub-grants for capital work within that amount. And we are in regular conversation. DHD is in regular conversation with each of those sub-grantees about their expected closing date. If they haven't closed yet, their other financing, construction timelines, et cetera. We're closely monitoring that. And then also note that ARPA funded about $8 million to purchase the Fairfield Inn. And there are a number of other shelter operations activities that the city is funding. The city, or excuse me, ARPA is also funding pre-development costs for the conversion of the two hotels that the city purchased more than a year ago. The conversion of those two hotels into permanent supportive housing. Next slide, please. The Office of Performance and Innovation. We are funding six staff positions. You can see they're only about 58% expended. The roughly $700,000 that is left to spend will all be spent on payroll costs during calendar year 2026. We've looked at projections and feel confident that they'll be able to fully expend that, that funding. Next slide, please. And then there are a few quasi-governmental organizations that are expending less than 75%. The first is Downtown Partnership of Baltimore. This is also, this is for Downtown Rise. And this $4 million grant is one that was awarded fairly late in the ARPA life cycle. So they have spent $1.3 million out of the $2 million that has been dispersed to them thus far. We just completed a budget modification after extensive conversation and work with them that will provide them with some more flexibility and the ability to spend more quickly. And the major categories of work that we're funding for Downtown Rise is small business assistance, public space improvements like graffiti removal or power washing blocks, and then also marketing and outreach. Next slide. For, can you go back one slide? We might have missed one. That's fine. Go ahead. For Enoch Pratt Free Library, I've already, we've already talked about the HVAC projects, which are nearing completion and will be fully spent. The very first line item that you see here on the slide, assistance to nonprofits. This is related to some capital improvements at seven different library branches meant to enable folks to operate in a more modern environment, to get access to the internet and to sort of restructure the traditional computer banks that libraries have. So three of the sites there overlap with the HVAC sites. So their, their progress is tied together. And we are expecting, now that the HVAC projects are nearly complete, these projects are also nearing completion. They should be done by spring of 2026. Next slide. For Live Baltimore, we recently awarded them an additional $1 million. They were able to spend, fully expend the grant that we'd already provided to them. And there was significant demand in the community for support for renovation and down payment assistance. So this additional $1 million will support that work. I will note that there are, there were 11 closings, I believe, in November. And there are something like 117 folks who've already benefited from the program. So we'll see that number continue to tick up in the coming months. Next slide. This is our contract with the University of Baltimore for program evaluation. They are leading nine program evaluations for us. As you might imagine, their work is not, is not front-loaded. Rather, it occurs as projects begin to close out and they've finished all of their data collection. So we expect the remainder of spend to occur through December of 2026 as they finish collecting data, writing, and then publishing their evaluations. Examples of some of the evaluations they're doing are Buy Back the Block, Train Up and Hire Up through Moed, the Community Arts Fund, and several others. That concludes my remarks, and I'm now happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I apologize for the delay. The UP team, you said that they're completing, they're doing nine of the program evaluations?
Correct.
Okay.
We, we worked with them over a period of a number of months to look at our entire ARPA portfolio and to use a set of criteria to determine which program evaluations to complete. Of course, we can't evaluate everything. So we prioritized which programs to evaluate based on their novelty, based on their expected impact, based on the availability of evidence already out in, out in academic literature. And that's how we came to the nine programs.
So, so understanding that we, we can't evaluate every program. What measures are still, what measures have still taken place to gauge the other programs effectiveness?
Sure. Every program has a set of defined program measures or performance measures that they report to us either monthly or quarterly, depending on what risk level they've been assessed at. So we receive those on a regular basis. We publish some of those through our treasury report. We publish some of those in our council report and online. And then, of course, we review them internally as we have conversations with agencies. I know that the performance data that we've collected, even if the project isn't subject to a program evaluation, agencies are encouraged to bring that program data to FY '27 budget conversations as they're talking about which programs have sort of proven to be effective and efficient and should be considered for, for non-ARPA funding moving forward.
Thank you. Acting Director, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. My, I guess, question is with the Department of Transportation. And thank you for that update with the, about the ADA ramps and the sidewalk repairs. And then you had mentioned, I guess, street maintenance. So I think something that needs to be added to the conversation and your conversations with transportation, there has been really an uptick over the last, I'd say like right before COVID on our streets in our city that are made out of concrete. And there's reasons that these streets were made, were concrete instead of blacktop. A lot of it has to do with whether it is, was developed going up a big hill or just, or a high-traffic area like the area where Polywestern is. Lots of concrete streets. Coles Ring Newtown, that whole community is concrete. Silburn around Sinai Hospital is concrete. The road, they're starting to ripple. We, of course, the ADA compliance ramp piece has been tremendous in that area, but the concrete streets are terrible. And more and more complaints are starting to come in. There needs to be a conversation on whether we're going to continue to keep them concrete or are we gonna put, I know it's a costly issue, but the conversation has to happen and something has to be done because it's, it's truly terrible.
I'll say for the, the roughly $1 million that's allocated for traffic safety and street maintenance under the City Services Agreement, we are really looking at contracts that are already in place, known needs, and where we can quickly get projects done, things that are shovel-ready and can be executed quickly because we only have, I know I said 14 months earlier, but I'm already thinking 12 months to, to get these projects done. So some of that work to rethink what materials we use, that would happen outside of this investment, simply because it's, that's more about citywide. How do we perhaps shift to different materials? And that's just outside of the scope and the timeline that we have for, for these funds.
Okay. Please, in your next conversations, just try to bring that piece up because it's just, it's been going on for a while, at least 10 years. And something really, you know, it's almost at an emergency state.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Acting Director. And thank you to your team for the visible and invisible work that you all have been doing. This is going to, in this hearing, we're going to be in recess at this time. Thank you.